And then also finally, welcome us. Good evening. Welcome everyone to our second candidate forum of the 2022 primary cycle. My name is Andrea Source. I am one of the co-chairs of the ACLU Solano County Chapter along with Chris Kelly. And I am here with my colleague Edward Russell Jr. of Solano Community College. I'll introduce him in more detail later. We are absolutely thrilled to be offering you this forum with our Board of Supervisors candidates, with our partnering organizations, as well as the League of Women Voters. To give you an all, an idea of where we're headed, we always begin our ACLU meetings with a quick land acknowledgement. And then we are going to offer an opportunity for the candidates to give opening statements. And we'll ask questions that have been compiled from members of the ACLU Chapter and Solano College. We'll probably get through six or seven questions together, and then we'll have the candidates give two-minute closing statements before we wrap up and remind everyone to vote. But as I mentioned, here we go. We always begin any ACLU meeting with a land acknowledgement. We encourage you to go to this website, I will put it in the chat, to view what native land you are on. And, Natalie, you beat me to it, wonderful. View which native land you are on. And we have this beautiful artwork by artist Jackie Fawn, which depicts some of our indigenous, the indigenous communities ancestors towering over California on this land. So please go to that website and look up what land you are on and acknowledge their contributions. For those of us that are not familiar with the Board of Supervisors, as I think many of us are, especially Solano College students, might be looking at some of these and voting for the first time, we wanted to get a quick screenshot of a map here with our five supervisor districts. We have five supervisors elected to four-year terms, and they're staggered. So we elect three in one cycle and two in the next cycle. This year in 2022, we have districts three and four open. Jim's sparing seat is going to be vacated. That one's open and covers portions of Sassoon and Fairfield. That's the candidates we'll be speaking with tonight. And then we also have District Four represented by John Vasquez, who is running unopposed. That covers Vacaville and the cities of Dixon and Rio Vista. If you are interested in looking up which supervisor district you are in, I'm going to put some information in the chat as well. I will put a boundary map as well as the website for the Board of Supervisors. The mission from the board website that I just put in the chat is that the board is the legislative and executive body of our county government. It serves as governing body of our housing authority, our Solano Facilities Corporation, Fire Protection District, the rural north Vacaville Water District, so covers a lot of different areas that many of us may not have been aware. And members of the board represent the county on numerous intergovernmental bodies. This is quoted from their website. "As the governing body for Solano County, the board is responsible for planning and provision of services related to public needs as required by state and federal law. That includes adopting an annual budget, adopting county ordinances, setting policies, confirming appointments for non-elected officials, and assisting citizens in solving problems and addressing local concerns." We have here the most recent map showing the third supervisory district, which is currently being represented by Jim Sperring, but will be open in 2022 for our election this fall. You can see it covers a portion of Fairfield and Sassoon, as well as Travis Air Force Base and a little bit of Cordelia. And we have five candidates for District Three that are listed here with their titles that are going to be on the ballot. And we have three with us tonight. We have our local businesswoman Jennifer Barton, Sales Manager Joe Joyce, and Sassoon City Council Member Wanda Williams. So we'll let you all introduce yourselves in a bit, and thank you truly for being here and allowing us this opportunity to let the community get to know you as they prepare to vote in this primary election. Before we introduce them, I want to introduce my co-moderator, Edward Russell Jr., who is here representing Solano College but has his own decorated resume as an activist here in Solano County. He recently in 2020 founded a nonprofit which is entitled Bruh and is part of a few other community organizations and is currently pursuing his AA in political science at Solano College. So thank you, Edward, for being here and for joining me in co-moderating this forum. I'll let you go ahead and give everybody a little more information about our format and kick us off.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Andrea, for the invitation. First of all, foremost, I have to recognize my ancestral land and recognize the stolen land we are currently occupying. Thank you very much. So let's just get on with it for time's sake. So we're going to talk about the forum format. Versus three-minute opening statement from each candidate. There will be moderated questions. Each candidate gets two minutes to respond. We have two-minute closing statements. Then it'll begin with candidates answering alphabetically. We'll rotate who answers each question first, and then there'll be an on-time or on-screen timer. Next slide. There we go. Here are the three candidates that we have today. Jennifer Barton, Joe Joyce, and Wanda Williams. Thank you for joining us this evening.
And we'll begin by inviting each of you to give an opening statement of up to three minutes. Let me get this timer set up on the screen, and we'll go in alphabetical order. So Ms. Barton, we can start with you.
All right. Thank you so very much. I'm Jennifer Barton, candidate for the Solano County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share my message, my information. I really appreciate the time. So I was born, raised in Santa Clara Valley and lived all around the Bay Area my whole life until coming to Fairfield about 31 years ago, looking for a place to live. And I just want to say how happy I am to be in Solano County, how much I appreciate Solano County. It's a beautiful place to live, and I care very deeply about it. So growing up in Santa Clara, my dad was a union carpenter. My mom was a stay-at-home mom with five kids. I was a middle child, so I like to say that I started off learning how to negotiate early as that middle child. I moved to Santa Rosa and went to school at Santa Rosa Junior College, and I credit that junior college with sending me on a path of my learning path. I never thought I would go to college. No one in my family had ever done that before, so it was excellent. Moved to San Francisco State University and graduated with a degree in political science. So it was very wonderful. Fast forward a little bit, got married, had a baby, moved to Solano County, and immediately became involved with the Democratic Party. And my background around my political viewpoint was in the early 80s when the Equal Rights Amendment failed. That's when I became politically active. I thought, my gosh, how could the United States of America not want women to be equal? So that started me on that path and took me to the Iowa caucuses as a as a volunteer for Allen Cranston, who was running for president at the time. And I highly recommend anybody going to those Iowa caucuses and learning how the process works. It was fascinating. So my professional career, once maybe six years after I graduated, it took a little while, I started working with California the California Assembly. And that is where I've learned right off the bat, how to serve constituents, how to manage state agencies, how to find out how to help people. And then went on to work in the U.S. House of Representatives for two members, which was very interesting. And that then took me to a whole nother level of working with the BA and other federal agencies. So I want to bring all of that information, all of the contacts that I've made over the year, all of the relationships I've built over the years to Solano County and help Solano County to move forward. I have no agenda except Solano County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll continue. Let me reset the timer. We'll continue in alphabetical order, Mr. Joyce, if you would like to give your opening statement. And you may be muted.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and your audience tonight. My name is Joseph Joyce. I'm a lifetime resident here in Fairfield. Little bit about me. Me and my family have been here all of our lifetime. Our family came here as military retirees. We came here because of Travis Air Force Base. So I grew up here in the neighborhood. I've lived here all our life. Our valley was our playground. I've raised my family here. All of us have been fortunate to be able to live here in this and stay within this Fairfield and Sassoon area. We haven't been forced to move away to create an income. My family's active within the community. I spent a career in law enforcement. Once I sustained an injury, I became a professional sales manager. Where I sell, continue today to sell law enforcement equipment to throughout the United States. Most of that is life-saving equipment that does hostage and rescue equipment and high-end technology to law enforcement for critical incidents and suicidal and hostage rescue stuff. So why do I want to run? I want to run to provide a citizen's perspective into county government. It's, you know, the, over the last couple of years, it's been more and more apparent that, you know, we need a local voice back in the seats, at the tables. The career politicians have continued to throw good money after bad. They're constant programs within the county that just don't reap the results that we need. We bring in consultants and things that want to tell us about programs that work other places, but they don't really take and look at the core things that our citizens are needing. The value, the valley's changing all around, especially at the college area where the traffic is continuing to increase, but they don't have concerns on how are we going to get all those people out of the valley in case of an emergency? You know, the exits are getting smaller. We're getting strangled there. Instead of looking at the real services of building, housing, and in the urban areas where our core needs tension, you know, crime and crime prevention. So again, there's not one, there's not one solution for all of these things. We've got to look at what are the core concerns and address those individually. So, you know, I plan to have a fresh look at those things instead of continuing down the same path all the time. I know I've got a few more seconds. I'd like, like I said, I'd like to answer your questions. I'm going to be open and honest about them. I'm not going to give you the same answers. I can't do it myself. I'm going to need the help of the citizen. Where I'm short on those policies, I'm going to get myself educated. I'm going to learn. But I'm also going to give you the straight answer. You might not like the answers that I give you, but at least I'm going to tell you the truth. So that's the best I can do for you. I ask for your vote and support tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. We may have, let me reset the timer and make sure it functions. And then we'll finish with Ms. Williams. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me today. It's really an honor to be with everyone tonight. I'm actually a graduate from Solano Community College. And I've transferred from Solano Community College to UC Davis, where I graduated with a degree in political science with an emphasis of public service. But I also served on the college on the Board for Education, Educational Foundation. So, you know, just another way for me to give back to the college that has really helped and guided me to where I am today. But just to share more about who I am, I am a wife. I've been married to my husband Anthony Williams for 30 years, mother of three exceptional children, Amber, Michael, and David. Unfortunately, my sons, Michael and David, have passed away. But they too also attended Solano Community College. They passed away from muscular discography. I'm currently the project manager for Solano Land Trust. So my emphasis is preserving open spaces and conservation of farms. So I really truly appreciate the community on which we live. I am Congressman Gira Mendez, 2001 Award recipient of Women of the Year for my work on improving the quality of life for those that live in my community. And as the Board of Supervisors, I'm running because I realize that we really need to tackle homelessness, but also doing so as a regional approach and collaboratively. And we have to make sure we're putting in mental health services, for making sure that we're attracting businesses to our county that provide good-paying jobs. People are tired of commuting across the bridge. And also making sure that we're protecting our open spaces, our farmers, and Travis Air Force Base, which is one of our economic developers, economic, excuse me, economic engines that we have right here in our county. So these are the reasons why I'm running. Because I want to make sure we have workforce housing and affordable housing for everyone. So I just want to thank you all for this opportunity to come before you and share with you why I'm running and have an opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So we'll go ahead and move to the moderated questions and Mr. Russell, you want to take the first one?
Absolutely. So our first question is, since this is an open seat, which each of you would be new to the Board of Supervisors, what do you believe are the core functions of the Board of Supervisors? What has our current board done well, and what are its biggest areas for improvement? And I believe that's Jennifer Barton going first.
I'm mute. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you very much. So the core board, the core functions of the Board of Supervisors is legislative, it's budget, it's overseeing the departments that you mentioned at the very beginning. It's overseeing the county portion of the space that we have, but it's also the largest part of the budget is Health and Social Services. That Health and Social Services is what is going to be the pinpoint, if we're saying what is the biggest area of improvement, or maybe what we need to move forward on are the Health and Social Services section. That's certainly with our homeless population that we have, with the mental health, the substance abuse. I have been on the First Five Commission now. I think this is my fifth year, maybe the sixth year. We've worked very closely with the Health and Social Services Department to bring so many great programs to our zero-to-five population. We were able to bring a First Five Center to Vallejo. Vallejo and Rio Vista were identified as two of the media sections of Solano County. And now we're going to be able to bring a First Five Center to Fairfield, in East Fairfield, which is where I live, which I'm thrilled about. I was instrumental in bringing $2 million for that First Five Center, and that's going to be a game changer for East Fairfield. So continuing those functions that we have as the board to oversee what needs to be done, working on our hope, moving forward with our health and social service needs that we want to just put on steroids. I think it's the best way to say that, to serve our population. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next would be Mr. Joyce. Hello, Mr. Joyce.
I'm sorry, not real good at the mute and unmute. Or stopping when I'm supposed to, so you have to forgive me. I think that, like Ms. Barton said, and you guys described it, the oversight responsibilities of the Board of Supervisors are the most important role. I think that they, over the, over the years, and the reason that I am running is, is the need for more citizens oversight with a citizen's focus. I think that the biggest failure of the current board is is a lack of, especially in District Two, of the citizens' concerns and the quality of life issues within District Three. There's a lot of focus on development here in District Three. It's not always in the best interest of the citizens here. Again, like Ms. Barton says, there's a lot of focus within the First Five and the youth development. Public health has been good now. The seniors, the senior concerns and aging has been lacking. For a long time, it was well-served. It is no longer a priority of the board in that respect, but I think they did a horrible job with the with American Rescue Funds, and they're currently still, a year and a half later, not done. Mission Solano was closed completely during the time of the pandemic. All of the shelters that the county served were closed. Not a single bed was used during the time of the pandemic, and that was a shame. So those were my, my biggest concerns and what could have been done better, should have been.
All right. Thank you, sir. And this is Williams. You can go ahead and answer that question.
Thank you. Well, both candidates prior have mentioned the core functions of the Board of Supervisors, but I just want to take a little bit further. Within that, it really sums up to the core job is to improve the quality of life of those that reside right here in Solano County. And so that's why you can see a large proportion does focus on social services. So what I can say that I believe the supervisor did well was when they did receive our funds, they did put in place a freeze on individuals being evicted from their homes. They definitely implemented that. However, these areas that I think where we can have more improvement is improving our fire district. Even though they were able to continue to balance a budget, enough, not enough funding went toward our fire district. And as you know, we continue to deal with wildfires and not having the funding in those areas. And additionally, not putting enough funding into homelessness. They spend a lot of time discussing homelessness, but not implementing strategies in order to combat it. And so I would say these are the areas in which they can do much more improvement, and that's why I'm running for county supervision. Because these are the areas that I want to really focus on and make sure we are improving and many more. It's imperative that we do that. So I would say those are the things they've done well. They've made sure we've had funding go to social services, but we need more funding to actually go into mental health services. So those are the, that will end with that, since my time is coming to an end. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have a, our next question builds off of that one, and I'll go ahead and put it on the screen. But before we answer, and we'll, we'll start rotating now, so we'll have Mr. Joyce answer this one first. But before we do that, I want to note, we've gotten a couple of chats about the viewing on the screen. If you go up to the upper right, you'll see the option to click side-by-side speaker view, which will give you all of the pinned moderators and candidates on the right side of your screen. And then there's a bar that you can click and drag to the left that'll stretch out and make and make everyone else bigger. So if you have your, if you have my screen showing the whole screen, hit the escape button, go to the top right corner of your Zoom, click side-by-side speaker view, and then drag that bar across. And you'll be able to get a nice view where you can see all of the candidates. All right. So we'll start with you, Mr. Joyce. This question is about your priorities. As you think about your role as a supervisor, what is your top legislative priority? And what actions would be needed in order to move that priority forward?
Yeah. Okay. So my top priorities as a board is actually getting in learning, learning the priorities of the other board members and actually starting to build partnerships with those other board members. Because again, as a board member, we are a single member. My responsibility would be District Three. But again, our responsibilities as a board together is, is for the county as a whole. Nothing moves within that county board without at least three votes. Preferably, we always want to get, we're going to want to have five. So those partnerships or that, that that cohesiveness of the board has to be there. So priorities have to be set by the board together. My, my job is going to be to drive those priorities within District Three and, and the needs of my district. But as the county as a whole, we have to make sure that those are there. Mine is to preserve the valley to make sure that, that we have a good quality of life here within the, within the county, but also to be to limit this, the growth of government, right, to ensure that we do a good job spending the resources of the county and to take care of the senior population, work on the homeless thing, create good jobs within the county for our people to come home to. Control the cost, cost of housing, those things that all of us want, and we all, you know, need here in the, yeah, here in Solano County. So those are the things that I want to do. Are we going to be able to do them? We haven't been able to do them so far, but we're all sitting there trying. All of us want that. All three of our candidates here want that. It's just who's going to be able to do it for us.
Thank you. So we'll have Ms. Williams. We'll have you go next.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, my top legislative priority is homelessness. That is on the minds of everyone residing right here in Solano County. But in order for me to actually take this and move it forward, this, my priority, my legislative policy is that it's going to take us working collaboratively together, the county, along with cities. But we also have to bring in stakeholders, such as business owners as well. Advocates that advocate on behalf of those in need that are unhoused. We need to work with them. Housing, workforce development, it's just going to take a collaborative approach, and it's not just one person or one group. It takes all of us working collectively to actually bring forth the changes we need. Not just that we want only housing, but we do need that. Affordable housing, workforce housing will be required because homelessness is multifaceted. People comes in all different forms of homelessness, from couch surfing to actually living on the street. We have to make sure we're investing in mental health services, and not just only investing, but putting in incentives to attract more individuals to actually work in that field. Right now, we have a shortage, but we have to make sure that we're doing everything possible to bring more individuals into that workforce. So to make sure we have complete wraparound services so that people can feel safe and knowing that we're doing everything possible to make sure that unhoused has the helping hand up. Doing everything we can to make sure our citizens feel safe when they shop and go places within our county. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Barton, go ahead.
Thank you. So I've been walking and knocking on doors for the last three months, and as I've been listening to folks when I, when they so kindly come to the door to talk, homelessness is always their top priority. There's no doubt about that. And we know that that's a problem in not only our county, but in the state. With homelessness, you just can't talk about that without talking about housing. The revenue numbers for Solano County alone are almost 11,000 new homes needed. Fairfield, Sassoon, and unincorporated areas are being asked to provide 3,700. So what we have to do is pull together with our surrounding counties, with our cities, to all work together to bring everybody to the table to make sure that we have those, the housing that we need to set that baseline, whether it's low, middle income or, or high, so that people can move up in their housing. So that's one thing that we need to do. Providing the mental health and substance abuse services, we need to do that. We need to have every tool in the toolbox to do that, whether it's care court, laws, law, conservatorships, and bring that to our population. You know, we all And bring that to our population. You know, we also need to make sure that we stay on top of our transportation. We are a transportation county. We have seven major freeways that run through it. So between making sure that we're mobile, but also bringing in and making sure that our transit opportunities for folks work. Uh, one of my volunteers comes from um, Vacaville and and he took the bus once and it took him almost two hours to get to Fairfield to come help walk with me. That's unacceptable. We need to work on our transit centers so that it works and it's seamless. And also, you know, I, I, I just have to make sure that we do that zero to five population. And set them on the track that they need to be set on so that they are ready to learn. They're, they're graduating from college and they're ready to then go forth and be productive citizens for all of us. And I think it's that base zero to five that's gonna set that goal um, for the parents and for the children to make it work for all of us.
Thank you. We pull up the next question.
All right, uh, moving on to our next question, and I think uh, we're at, we're, we're gonna start and begin with Mrs. Williams. Uh, this is a round affordable housing. What do you believe is the role of the county and the Board of Supervisors in order to ensure that cities in our county. Meet regional housing needs, allocation, Rena obligations, particularly when it comes to affordable housing? Mrs. Williams?
Well, thank you. Well, first and foremost, we definitely have to uh, support affordable housing. Being here in Salano County. As I just mentioned previously, um. In response to the last question, we have to make sure that we're doing this. I had the opportunity to go and visit OES, which is a facility out in Vallejo. And they're actually building workforce housing. We need to continue to support that and find land. That within uh, our, our ability to build affordable housing there as well. But what we can't do is go into areas where it's not uh, best for affordable housing to be. Affordable housing not only have to be built, but we have to make sure it is around transportation. That they have access to food and can shop. And more importantly, making sure that we're doing everything possible to build as many portable units. That we can. And that transition to supporting dense housing. We have to do that in order to do, to make this work. So affordable housing must be built. The county have to support it. Make sure we're putting funding toward uh, affordable housing, supporting the agencies. That are advocating for affordable housing and these build, uh, developers that can bring it in. But making sure that this, this, this housing is in places where it makes sense. Where people can actually not only live there, but also have good quality of life. And so we have to make sure that we're addressing all those different key elements. So that we can do all we can to bring affordable housing here to Salano County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Uh, next would be Mrs. Barton.
Thank you. So for affordable housing, I, I think it's, oh, it's a little stunning to me. That we're so excited about the homeless coalition group that's come together, the two by two, as they call them. With the two city council members in the county and saying, gosh, aren't we doing good? We're finally coming together. If we don't do that for our affordable housing, then we're doing a disservice to our county. So that model, which is a model from the Salon of Transportation Authority, where decisions are made. By the policy people, by the elected officials to say, this is what we're gonna do. This is where we're going to put this housing. We are gonna work as a group to get state dollars, to get federal dollars, which are on the table. And I think we have left money on the table in the past, and what I can do is uh, help identify where that is, how we can bring that back to the county. And then the county doesn't do housing, we don't, but maybe we need to work on that. Is there something adjacent to where a city is that we could work together with property that we may have? But I think it has to be, again, much like Salon of Transportation Authority or Coalition for Homelessness. Everybody in each of our seven cities needs to be at that table to make that happen. So we're focusing, we're saying, the first place we're gonna bring that is Fairfield or Sussin, where the first place is gonna be Vallejo. And then we just go down the line until we make that happen, instead of all seven cities trying to fight and get those dollars or those tax breaks. I think if we work together, we can make it happen. And I can bring those folks to the table. I've done that in the past, and I'm excited to help on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And lastly, Mr. Joyce.
Yeah, so. The ladies have great ideas. The thing is, is what truly affects affordable housing is the desire to have the housing. And in the communities that they want. The biggest problem with the housing that's created is uh, the housing that people want. Is currently bought up by corporate uh, personnels or they're, or they're bought up at over asking prices. So the housing for people in Fairfield is never even hits the market. It's bought up by people outside of Fairfield at at overbought it values long before it even hits the market. We recently sold my mother-in-law's property and it never went to market when we brought her into the house. And that's happening every day in the city of Fairfield at Sussin, right? And you go in Canada, they just put a moratorium on that they're totally corporate buyers in the market because of the same housing project. Those are ideas that are are real now, you know? We can't, we can't build housing fast enough in the city of Fairfield that's desirable for the city of Fairfield. At at that level, you know, what, what is proposed, even out there in the Cordelia Valley area, those apartments. They didn't have a, a low income or moderate income element in it, right? The housing that is affordable housing that's being built today is in the city is, is the insil, right? So we have to, and and the county cannot mandate what the city builds. We can only advise, we can recommend, we can build it in the county. We can assist those nonprofits with funding to help build it in the, in the city. Um, and and encourage the cities to do it. But as it, as the ladies expressed, we can encourage it, we can, we can to help facilitate those, those meetings. Um, but, but again, we need to have some kind of ordinance or something that. Um, that works on that.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Yes.
All right, our next question builds off of that, and we've already touched on this a little bit. What additional steps should the county take in order to address the needs of the unhoused community? And I believe we're back to the top. We'll start with Ms. Barton this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. After I uh, first declared that I was running, the first thing that I did was to go out and take a tour of Shelter Inc. And have a briefing around what they have, what they offer and how it works. They certainly need some more bolstering. They need some more funding so that they can use. We can open up all of the beds that they have and that can be used. So that's an untapped resource that I think needs a little bolstering. Now, the uh, county has, has done a great job. They've broken ground on a mental health facility, but I think it has sixty beds or sixty-two beds. Because what we are looking at, of course, and we've talked about this a little bit at the beginning, was um. You know, two sides of the homeless uh, population. There's folks who maybe had a uh, medical problem or lost a job. And we wanna, we wanna get them before they are homeless. So that's a one preventative step that we need to take. Then there's folks in the middle, and there's folks who have mental health or substance abuse issues. And those need, those folks need to be taken care of. And those are some, you know, using the tools in our toolbox that we have, as I talked about before. Which is the Care Court and Laura's Law and Conservatorships and having the mental health beds so that they can be taken care of. So there's um, there's a variety of things that we still can do and make happen. And I look forward to seeing some of the decisions that come out of that collaborative group as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Joyce, you're up next.
So I think the county, um, like I said, they, they've come together now because the issue of homelessness is so great and so bizarre. Um, and the programs that they have been using haven't worked. And again, the community is at that point where they're tired of hearing, we have a program. Because a program is an excuse, whether it works or not, whether it fails or not, we've never had those results. And nobody ever holds anybody accountable for the result. It's not that we don't have the ability to have a solution. We've never had the resolve to actually have that solution. Every time there's a major incident or a fire, um, or an evacuation. Those people don't sleep on the ground or or in a thing or on a shelter. Those beds come in, they're provided, they're sheltered for fire victims because those people vote. The homeless people don't have the advocacy or the response that they need. When we have the resolve to con- consider homelessness a real crisis, we'll solve that problem. It's time for us to solve the problem. That's why there's the two by two. That's why there's something. And that's why Newsom is now supporting this problem. We, it's our time to help those homeless people. And thank goodness we're doing it. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Joyce. And Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I feel that the county, what they have done so far. Is we've been talking about what can we do? And yes, uh, the two by two has started. However, we still have to continue to do more to address the needs of the unhoused community. And I believe one of the things we need to do is partner with the Fair Housing Advocacy in Northern California. Uh, so that we can really build on some of the thoughts and strategies that we have. That's gonna be important. We have to make sure that even though we're building this and broke ground on on uh, for mental health services. Uh, facility, we need more uh, for those individuals that need that. But unhoused individuals aren't just uh, individuals from that community. It's multifaceted. And it comes with different issues and concerns. I think what also needs to be included is making sure that we're helping individuals through our workforce development. Making sure we put funding in there to ensure that individuals that may need more career training. They have that available to them. Um, helping individuals in that way is gonna be imperative and important. Making sure that we continue to build and support cities that that is building uh, housing, affordable housing. For more people. We have to make sure we're doing that as well. So it's a multifaceted approach. It's not a one uh. You know, shop for all. I mean, it comes in multiple different things. And so we have to put in place a strategy that can address all those different issues and concerns. And also improve and increase our ability to help those that may need uh, housing voucher. So those are some other areas. Oh, my time is up.
Thank you. Right.
All right, uh, we're gonna shift directions here a little bit, uh, and this is uh, Mrs. Barton is gonna start us off with this one. I believe we're back at the top now. Um, this is about sheriff oversight. Salano County.
Are we on, Mr. Joyce? Sorry. I think we are.
Okay, sorry about that. Forgive me. Uh, that's what old age gets you. Uh, so the question is, uh, Salano County residents are concerned about reports of right-wing extremist groups. Such as three percenters in the sheriff's office. Do you support civilian oversight of law enforcement? Had you been on the Board of Supervisors when it voted on sheriff oversight, how would you have voted and why? Mr. Joyce?
I do not support a civilian oversight of the sheriff's department. And this is why. This, the Board of Supervisors is elected by the people. Some and, and we are a political body, which means that we are five people. That represent five distinct districts in a population of Salano County. The people of Salano County vote for this sheriff who is a constitutional officer. He is elected or she is elected. They vote for that sheriff. Every four years, they can also vote to recall that sheriff. That is his oversight along with the judge. Uh, he can be held criminally, the grand jury reviews his work, that just uh, that. He can be charged criminally by the district attorney, but also he is, he is that oversight. By Attorney General of the State of California. So. I'm like, same as us, yeah, we're elected by the, the people of Salano County. We can also be recalled. So the constitutional officers are there, or the constitutional officers in the county. Are held to account by the citizen. How dare us take away their voice or their vote? And we select either um, a group of people. Who are not qualified to evaluate all of the different roles and responsibilities of the sheriff's department. Whether it be coroner's responsibilities, medical examiner responsibilities, or all the duties within the sheriff's departments. So that's the reason.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. The question alive would be Mrs. Williams.
Thank you. Well, um, first and foremost, I believe in complete transparency uh, for. Any uh, governmental agency, transparency should always be the core. And it's important for citizens to know how law enforcement is responding to their concerns. Especially if the concern is uh, right-wing extremist groups. What I have uh, recommended is that we have a hybrid approach, that we do and bring on civilians. So that they can have input, but also bring in our sheriff's department as well, a few sheriffs with our citizens. They need, the citizens need to have an opportunity to express to our sheriff's department their concerns. And the sheriff's department should be there to listen and have an opportunity to understand and engage with the community. So that when they go back uh, with their fellow officers, they can really explain where the community stands and why. And how can they work together uh, to make sure that those concerns are be met? Now granted, the sheriff is an elected official. That is true. Uh, however, as the Board of Supervisors, we can have these conversations to influence and encourage. The sheriff's department to go in this direction. And this, I feel, is the best way it can work because then citizens have an opportunity. Right in there to have these conversations with sheriffs so that they can understand and why their concern. Share with their ideas on how we can change, how we can improve. And make sure that every citizen feels protected in their home and in their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Uh, Mrs. Barton?
Thank you. I too have some concerns about things that we've been hearing from the sheriff's office. And um, I've talked about this one time before, when I was at Bart. It was a year after Oscar Grant was killed. And the conversation started around a, a police oversight board, which they uh, eventually did implement. It was a long process. It took a lot of time, a lot of money. They did put that into place and it has been working, so it is an option. But let me, let me say this, before you go from zero to a hundred. What I would wanna see, and this is actually a, a really good process that Bart went through. They invited the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives to come in and do a review of the police department. And then they made recommendations, which gives a baseline, because while we do have concerns, let's find out what is going on. Now, the difficulty for the Board of Supervisors, of course, is that the sheriff is separately elected. But that doesn't mean that conversations can't be had with the sheriff and the sheriff's office around, let's having that, have that transparency. Let's see what's going on. Let's see what recommendations we have. You know, there's so many things out there, post-training reforms. The Center for Policing Equity. There are so many tools that we can have and see and find out what's going on to, to make happen. If it needed to get that far, I mean, certainly that is always an option.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Barton.
All right, we're gonna shift again, this time to the environment. And as I think most of us know, our county is particularly susceptible to the impacts of climate change. Not just on the coast, but throughout the county. How would you address the? How would you address these environmental issues as a county supervisor? And I wanna make sure I have the order straight. I believe we're starting with this Williams this time. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Well, you're correct. Um, we are being challenged by climate change, not just in cities, but it's also affecting our farmers as well. So climate change is real. It's something that on the Board of Supervisors, we cannot sit there and say, oh, well, we don't believe that that's a concern or an issue. Uh, so we need to continue to take the programs that we have, expand them and and make sure we bring them up to date on the issues that are affecting environmental issues right now. Uh, I do believe the last time that uh um particular uh program that that oversees environmental issues in the county was looked at, you know, maybe ten years ago when Linda Cypher was actually on the Board of Supervisors. But right now, we need to make sure we, make sure we looking at these different things. We have to look at uh sea level rising, uh heat exhaustion right now for those that will actually work on farms. That is a concern for farmers with that climate change. So we have to make sure that we're meeting with all the different agencies and stakeholders that have that put all their emphasis on the environment and making sure that we're having these robust discussions and making the implementation changes in the county to address is the climate change. Uh, we also have to make sure that we're doing everything to uh, we have electrical uh charging stations throughout the county, even taking the buildings that we have right now and changing how uh we put in uh put solar into our buildings. And so just doing everything we can to minimize our carbon footprint. We're also making sure we're addressing all the issues concerning climate change that affect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barton, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, for the county, we need to work on protecting our natural resources that we have here. We need to encourage clean energy throughout the county, through our buildings, if we can work with cities. I think cities, I think government is working towards that pretty well. I've seen that at the state for sure. Um, and I think the county has worked on that as well. They put some time and energy into it. And and just make sure that we are working for as as strongly as we can so that clean energy is throughout what we have existing or 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 building in the future. The county, uh, the county's role is gonna be to be prepared for this climate change problems that we're having. We need to have the plans into place for flooding and for fire because that's what's gonna be our uh, our uh problem, if you wanna say, or challenge. I think it's more than a challenge. I think it's a problem. And we need to be prepared to um be ready to have our plans in place, working with our state and federal agencies to make sure that we're ready for that when that happens. You know, we can also continue to support wind turbines, uh, which are out in especially designated wind area. I mean, that's why Travis Air Force Base uh went in where it did because that wind that's out there is phenomenal. And solar panels, keep in, keep it, keep uh making sure that we're doing solar panels throughout the county and whatever we can do to support solar panels for the uh population as a whole. So that's how I see climate change and how we have to address it. Because our county is filled with farmland and uh, you know, we worried about our residential water supply and habitat for migratory birds. We have a big open space county. So these issues are gonna come to us and we need to be prepared for them.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Joyce.
Yeah, okay. So I actually think that climate change, um, you know, we need to keep keep the science in mind. We need to maintain uh the county's leading edge because the county is uh truly up to, uh, you know, keeps itself up to date. It is uh, it it supports uh the climate change agenda. It, you know, it um provides the grants and stuff. It encourages it with with participation with the farms, the agriculture community, the businesses. Um, and again, we, we provide that information. The county participates in all those programs. I think that we should continue to uh use our lobbying resources that we bring home as much of that money um that we can for both state and federal programs. And yeah, when it makes sense for the county to to do more, we should um when it when it does it, um, we should make sure that we don't get into programs that are too early into the system and may cost the county money. But we should, we should do that and we should be good stewards of the county's resources. Um, just like we would in our own homes. And that's truly what we should be doing for everything that the county does, is we should treat it like it's our own money because it is. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. And we have a couple more questions left from our end. Give me one second to tee them up. All right.
I believe we're starting with Mrs. Barton. Am I correct? We're back to the top.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so Mrs. Barton, uh, you'll be uh first to answer this question regarding renter protections. Recently, rising housing prices have led to displacement and evictions throughout the Bay Area. As our county continues to grow, what will you do to increase protections for renters to protect them from displacement?
Well, I would go after as much money as I could go after from the state. Right now, we have a a budget that's just booming. And if this isn't the perfect amount of if this isn't the perfect way to use that budget money, I don't know what is. So you know, that's, that's the first thing that I would do. Um, and in, in, you know, for the renters to protect from displacement, I think that's some wraparound services. I think that's getting to them early. Um, so before they get to that point to to work around what do they need? How can we help them get what they need? What uh either nonprofits or social, social service agencies we can find to bring to the table to help them with where they're at, whether it's it's jobs or uh food insecurities or those different uh medical insecurities because it often comes from uh a particular problem that happens in a, in the household as well as the cost of living that's here. So if we also bring more housing in and we bring a variety of levels of housing in, I think that will help us as well. Um, and I think we can do that. And I look forward to to trying to help bring that uh, bring that forward for Solano County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Barton. Next, we have Mr. Joyce.
So again, um, the renter protections and stuff, within the rural county areas, the county has a lot of latitude. We have, uh, you know, looking at and participating, you know, as a viewer of the meetings. I don't know what the books say. I don't know what the surplus is and and the flexibility in that. But truly, those cities are 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 those areas. Uh, we do have, you know, the the belief money that's available, that could be earmarked for that in the short term. But the renter protections, uh, those fundings mostly have to come out of the city's uh resources, you know, in inside the city and the urban limits, you know, the county. A, a lot of times the citizens truly don't know what the county's limitations are in those things. We provide those monies as pastures from the state or the federal government. Um, so we're limited in that. We can encourage it. Uh, we could say that's what the citizens want. But the citizens, uh, just recently, you know, the the portion of the of the City of Fairfield's money uh was set aside for that was turned into the general fund because it's that easier to spend on regular items uh instead of relief. So you know, yes, I think that we should provide renter relief when we can, but we also should be um also giving property on relief because those are the people that still have a mortgage to pay on that property that was uh not being paid for. Uh, so again, it's a double edged sword for everybody because when they default, the bank um becomes the owner, right? And then that investor comes in and buys it for five times or for, you know, overmarket. And then we don't have another rental unit within the City of Fairfield. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you. Well, let me first just start with, the county did start off really well with providing renter protections, especially during the pandemic. However, the state of California apparently has housing is key. And so the the county have transferred that information to housing is key through the state. And then the state, and then now you have to apply through the Catholic charities in order to receive any help when you're being displaced because of the rising costs of 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 rent and the ability to pay. So it's imperative that at the county level that we, one, make sure that our community have full access and understand where they can uh a- apply for opportunities to help them not be displaced. Uh, working with our different cities to ask them to host uh uh winter protection and displacement. Not webinars, but uh workshops. We have to do everything we can. And not only that, take some of these ARPA funds and use them to also help increase more ability to keep people in their homes. Uh, otherwise, we're gonna continue to see a rise in homelessness right here in Solano County. And we already know that's on the minds of all of us. Uh, how can we make sure that we're doing all we can to keep people from getting off the streets? We have to make sure they're not going back to the streets by being displaced. Uh, right now, renters have the lowest amount of protection uh in this, in in this county and the state. But we have to work with our local um legislators at the state level as well to ask them and and work with them to put in place more protections for our renters. So that's gonna be key and that's gonna also be important as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
All right, we have one more prepared question. And this one, there's a few different angles you could take in answering it. I'll put it up here. It has to do with public lands. But I also wanna say that we're doing very well on time and I wanna maximize the time that we have with our candidates. So we'd like to invite our guests to pose questions in the chat um in the next few minutes. If you have a question that you'd like to ask our candidates here, please feel free to send it to the chat. It'll go to our hosts and moderators and we'll probably have time for one or two questions from the audience once we once we get through um this final question, which has to do with public lands. As we've mentioned a couple of times already, the Board of Supervisors is responsible for stewardship of county-owned public lands. And we'd like to know if you have any priorities, perhaps specific projects or um a method for overseeing this land. You might touch in this question on things like community land trusts, production of open spaces, use of our agricultural lands, or pursuit of private economic development. Um, what are your priorities when it comes to thinking about our public lands? And I'm thinking we're starting with Mr. Joyce, but I wanna confirm. Okay, Mr. Joyce, whenever you're ready.
So this is uh really actually a a pet peeve of mine. It seems like the county um is always readily uh willing to turn over its public lands to cities uh for its administration or to things like Solano Land Trust in the past. Uh, and example, a fine example of that is Lurid Valley, which is now turning into a commercial um residential development. Uh, in the past, that was actually a a part of Solano County's uh property, that City of Baccaville, now commercial development. Um, you know, so Loop in the Lake or the Lagoon is now gonna be part of some P of A uh residential area. Rockville Hills Park was a Solano County park. Now it's a City of Fairfield park. So I actually think that the Solano County uh should maintain more of this open space, um, whether it's through a park ranger program, something similar to East Bay Regional Parks, which manages its its uh park system um of of most of the Bay Area um areas like in Oakland, in in uh parts of Contra Costa County and stuff where they retain some control of its of its park system through a ranger program or something like that. So yes, I think that the county should uh take responsibility for those type of operations.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Uh, Ms. Williams, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, yes, the county has to be a steward of land steward. That is very important and is vital for for this county as a whole. I currently work uh for Solano Land Trust, um, uh, operations manager. So preserving our agriculture space and our open spaces are imperative. Uh, the county alone, our county right now has uh is deemed and known to have one of some of the best soils uh for producing produce. And we have great wineries here. So it's important that we manage these uh these lands that we're not putting development there on land that is deemed uh suitable for growing. There are lands that aren't, that are have a a a grade of five or below that you can use for different type of things or development or more so agrotourism. But we must make sure that we're preserving our open spaces, that we support our a regional park district. We're the only county that don't have a regional park. So and I know there's, these are the areas in which we need to really look and make sure we're doing. I have the opportunity to work on uh Patuino, what talk a doggy D. It's an open space park. Open spaces is key to our well-being and our quality of life. And especially for our farmers who have dedicated their time and effort. We need to make sure we're preserving those spaces for them so they continue to produce the produce, the meat, everything that we use, even our ranchers. Uh, I was at an event that says, one thing you have to do when every time you eat a meal, take a moment to think of farming. Yes, we have to be land steward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barton, go ahead.
Thank you. I started off by sharing with you that I grew up in Santa Clara Valley, which uh when I was younger was just in the phases of changing over from agriculture um orchards to housing. So I watched that progression until it turned into Silicon Valley and it was very sad for me. And when I first came to Solano County, one of the reasons I moved there was the beauty of Solano County. Um, and as we uh lived here and and moved on, the open spaces that we have between the cities are a beautiful piece of what we have and what makes it desirable to live here. So I would be um very supportive of keeping that open space as well. Um, Sistin Valley, of course, is a gem. We wanna make sure that we keep that in agriculture for the third uh supervisory district. That's, that's our main agricultural area. And I think we have a very good plan with the Sistin uh strategic plan to make sure that that does stay uh in agriculture and they're working hard and working together to make that happen. So that's good. The Solano Land Trust has been working for many, many years to uh work hard to keep the some open space and keep it available for people you, for people's use, which is fabulous. So I I hope they can continue to do that. And you know, I, we have talked for years and years and years about having a regional park. And we always talk about how much it costs, can we afford it? And at some point, I think we have to ask, um, how can we not afford it? Now, the trick is gonna be in funding it, but you know what? That's what's exciting and that's how we bring people together and that's how we bring the experts together and we get them at the table and we make that happen. Um, and it won't be right away, but it's certainly that can happen. Um, once you get that process going, it can happen probably sooner than we think it can. So I think that would be something for us to work towards as a county as a whole.
All right. Thank you. I want to again invite everyone to submit questions if you have any. We We have a little bit of time for at least one, maybe two, audience questions if we have any. And honestly, you can either type in the chat, or we could even have you raise your hands. Got a little bit of time.
While we're, while we're waiting, is it okay if I pose a question?
Go for it.
Mine's pretty simple to all three of you guys, uh, women, is that, you know, from the layman's point of view, I'm just a normal citizen, um, and one of my challenges as a member who would like to be engaged and involved and participate, um, in some of the governmental, uh, issues that's going on in the county. Some of the challenges, one of the main challenges, the timing of the meetings. I know county supervisor meetings generally meet in the morning, during the week, when most of our citizens are at work or doing some form of work, or even if not working, they could be transporting students back and forth from school. So I posed a question, would you, um, would you listen to conversation about changing the time when it's more practical for the normal, uh, working citizen to be able to attend and participate? And I, we'll just start at the top again, Mrs. Barton.
Okay. Well, when I worked at Bart as well, I'm going to refer to things that I know and how they worked, how they didn't. When I was at Bart, um, we had the same conversation. And so we did, um, have some occasional evening meetings and Saturday meetings. And maybe they weren't consistent enough, but we really didn't have more participation. Now, saying that, I, I don't mind trying anything. I mean, I will cer- I'm certainly open to listening and trying and seeing if people can participate. Here's my question. I love this because, um, part of my job is to go and talk to high school students and college kids and seniors to get them to be part of the, uh, uh, political, uh, participation process. Is start pulling up the, um, the agendas and take a look at the agenda. Are there things there that you care about or, or, or are interested in? Because if there's nothing there that you really care about, you know, what does it matter? Watch them on video afterwards and take a look and see, gosh, I wish I would have been there to say this or to say that. The nice thing about the pandemic, if you could say there's anything nice, is it has opened up for, um, call-ins, for Zoom meetings. So it has opened that opportunity for us, I think, for more participation. So I, I'm, I'm willing to try anything, and if the people don't come, we can redo. I just, I'm, so I'm open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Joyce?
Yeah, so Russell, the, the reason that most of the time that it's in the daytime, and I agree with you because since I've been interested in the board meeting, I've been watching them, and I have their workshop caller most of the day. But it's because they're so long, um, and they stretch from the morning all the way until the afternoon with a short break. But because there's so many staff, county and city staff, but also the presenter staff that come in, and those are their normal work hours. And so when they have to come in in the evening hours, that, that amount of staff personnel, um, those are without, they're extended into the evening hours, the cost and stuff is, is just tremendous for a board meeting. So that's usually why they're very normal business hours. Um, but I think that, like Jennifer said, I, I think that maybe as an alternative, one, one meeting a month, uh, you know, if they were doing twice a month or, or two meetings a month. The other thing that they also do is remember, they don't always just meet as a board. They also have, um, planning commission meetings or transportation meetings and stuff that also have nighttime meetings. So board supervisor is, is a full-time job, unlike the city council, which only meets once or twice a month. Um, you know, for, for two or three hour period. Um, the supervisors are basically, they take, they have a regular office hours, plus then they have the meetings, um, that go along with it. So that's usually why it's, it's a, it's a full day of meetings. And then they have, um, the litigation part, because i- in, in addition to the supervisor's job, they, they have to review all the litigation, any other things that are going on. They, they also participate in any ongoing labor negotiations, the other stuff within that calendar part of it, uh, to comply with the Brown Act and the other stuff that's going on.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Williams.
Well, thank you. Well, first and foremost, I'm just going to use my experience as, uh, an elected official, uh, in Sistin City. I have always advocated and fought for, uh, making sure that citizens in Sistin City always had an opportunity to be engaged in, uh, in any meeting, be it, uh, community meetings or not. And so for me, I think it's very important that citizens do have an opportunity to be involved. One thing I want to see is continue is that hybrid approach, where people can continue to call in that can't necessarily leave from their job to make it. But one of the things I've always have encouraged as well is making sure that I put out on social media and everywhere I can, where anyone can find information is what's going to be on the agenda, when it's going to happen, why? And encouraging, even if you can't physically come, you can send in your information by writing a letter. You can send it into the clerk. And also holding and hosting, uh, community, uh, engagements. And so that's something I've done in my role as a council member, and that's something I planned to continue to do in my role on the Board of Supervisors. So, and having open door policy, where constituents can always come in, anyone to have a conversation with me if they're in District Three or not. So I think it's important, important as public servants, that we do everything we can possible to help make sure our community is engaged at all times. And I'm open to having, um, evening meetings as well. You know, we need to have some evening meetings, and now I'm sure the other board of supervisors, I want to don't say that. But maybe, I can't speak for them, but they might feel like, ah! But I think it's important that we do everything we can possible to make sure that we have everyone engaged as much as possible. So that's what I believe we should be doing to make sure that it is like you, Russell, have that opportunity to participate in the process. Thank you.
Thank all three of you guys for answering that question honestly. Thank you.
And thank you, especially because one of the first community questions we got in, um, right before Edward asked that question was how do you see public participation in politics? So now that we've kind of answered that, um, I think we might have time for one or two more if we do. We got, we got four questions, and, um, if we do maybe one minute kind of rapid round. Um, someone asked Travis Air Force Base is important to the area, but it needs space and housing. How will you protect it from encroachment? So, you know, what do we see as the role of this air force base in Solano County? And how will you make sure it has the space it needs? And I have completely lost track of the rotation. Someone can help me.
I think it's Mr. Joyce.
I think so too. Mr. Joyce, you want to take this one first? We'll do a one-minute lightning round.
Sure. So, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read it again, so hang on. So, okay, so is the question number three?
Yeah, the role of Travis Air Force Base in our county, and how we'll make sure it has the space it needs, um, and doesn't get encroached upon, um, by all of our development around, around it.
Well, correct. So, so again, the, oh, the county open space ordinance, oh, hang on. Okay, so I'm unmuted. So the county open space ordinance was designed, a- and it actually has a sunset clause, and the sunset clause is, is going to expire in two, 2028. So that was designed to protect this Travis Air Force Base, uh, the valley, but all of the county. The focus right now is the Middle Green Valley and the developments that are going on there. But these are one of the reasons of that. City of Fairfield's ordinance is also designed to protect that. Baccaville, Travis Air Force Base is, is the, at one time was the economic hub, the major development here. Um, and, and so it is designed to be protected. The housing concerns, again, is, is what I was telling you, is if we can't build housing fast enough, if we continue to get, allow it to get, to grab up by commercial developers or people outside, we've got to try and figure out some protection for that.
Great, thank you. And, um, Ms. Williams, go ahead. I know it's different having half the time.
Uh, well, you know what? I'm really honored to actually, uh, be honorary commander for Travis Air Force Base. Uh, so for me, I feel this is imperative that we are protecting Travis Air Force Base. It's, uh, one, they provide a large amount of jobs for our region. They are one of our economic engines. So it's imperative that we are protecting it and not allowing that encroachment all around the base. Uh, it's imperative that we work with the cities that are actually surrounding the base. So you got the back end of Dixon, we have, uh, parts of, a large part of Fairfield and some of Sistin, uh, as well. So we all have to work collectively together to protect Travis Air Force Base. So that means meeting with the cities and making sure we're doing everything possible to ensure that Travis feels protected and know that we recognize and appreciate what they bring to our county.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Barton?
Well, any of us who lives for the closing of Mare Island know how important Travis Air Force Base is to Solano County. It is, uh, $1.6 billion, uh, impact on our local economy. So it's important not only for us locally, but nationally and for our self-defense. So making sure that we keep that open space around it is exactly what we need to do. I've worked on the Travis Regional Armed Forces Committee, um, and several other, uh, Travis Protection Committees throughout my career, uh, at the House of Representatives and on the state level, to make sure that that space stays around. The second part of making sure Travis Air Force Base stays where it is, is making sure we bring monies back, which I did when I was with the House of Representatives. We brought money back for the front gate. We brought monies back for the band room, making sure that it's, and we brought, uh, money back for the housing, making sure that it's viable and it's working, and it's working for the military as well as the community. So I'm very dedicated to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you all. And we are, in the interest of time, um, let's go to our closing statements.
So, all three candidates will have two minutes to give your closing statement. And again, we'll just start in order. Mrs. Barton?
Thought we were starting backwards this time, although I must say, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you having the questions on the, on the, um, screen. That was very helpful. All right, I'm ready. Okay. So thank you so much for your time tonight. I really appreciate being with you here. I have spent my career, the last 20, 25 years, managing big personalities and bringing people together to, uh, tackle those big issues. Uh, if you look at my endorsement list, I have support from every side of the aisle, every side of the county, regional. I have people, uh, with every, every, on the every spectrum. Because what that does is it helps bring everybody to the table when you're trying to solve the big issues. And if you can't bring everybody to the table, you're not going to be able to have that discussion to solve those issues. I don't have a perfect plan for every issue that we have, but I think if we get those people to the table, we can find those solutions, and we can make the changes needed for Solano County. And I'll tell you, I will bring every bit of the experience, my public service experience, my constituent services, helping people cut through that red tape, everything that I have learned, I will bring to the county to help move us forward and make us better. And, and I tell you, uh, I will work very hard to not leave any money on the table at the state and federal level, because that is how we, uh, fund so many of our projects here in Solano County, state and federal, and then we get it out to the county as a whole. So my only agenda is Solano County. I'm here because I want to make things better than I found them, and I really am excited to, to get to work. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Joyce? You're muted, sir.
Again, thank you guys for having us, uh, here today. I wish our other two, um, opponents were here to also have this opportunity. Um, but again, the ladies, they were graceful. Um, I appreciate them being here, um, for contrast also. Um, just like my opponents today, you know, we all want to work on the problems of crime, homelessness, and housing costs. Uh, the difference, you know, that we're going to be here today is, uh, what we're not, what they're not going to say. I don't want to keep throwing our, our, our money, um, away for bad programs. I don't want to waste our money on funding jobs, um, bad paying jobs. I want to bring good jobs here. I want to work with our people in our community locally to solve our local problems. I understand that they, they've had careers, they, they, they've worked really, really hard. They've done good work. Right? I just want to have local voices back on these seats. I want to help other local residents that want to take their voices back in their city councils, their school boards, and be responsible for our communities, you know? We've given power to, to the local politicians, to the people that have run state government for way too long and expected way too much. The cities and the county of Solano deserve better. You know, we've given them chances. Our homeless problem's not better. Our crime is on the increase. We need to have voices that are responsible to our own communities. I'm asking you guys for the opportunity to just serve. I served our communities. I took an oath of office. I've never forgotten that. We serve the people, cities, and counties that we serve.
Thank you very much, sir. Mrs. Williams?
Well, again, I want to thank everyone that actually took the time out today to be a part of this forum by, you know, logging in and being present and sending your message, your questions if you had any. But I just want to remind you why I'm running, because I care about people. I will put people first. I am the champion for the people right here in Solano County, and especially in District Three. I will work on and make sure that we are addressing homelessness and making sure that we're investing in mental health services, as well as making sure we're investing in, uh, workforce development and those career pathways. I've also have been acknowledged for the work I've already done as a council member and a former mayor pro tem of Sistin City. I was acknowledged by Congressman Gary Mendy for my work in making sure that I've done everything possible to improve my community. And I was recently awarded by, uh, the Napa Solano Central Labor Council for my work on, uh, la- labor partnership. So I'm truly about the, the, the community. I'm truly about those that live here. And I'm going to do everything possible to make sure that we have good paying job here in our, our county by working with those companies that offer those jobs, making sure that we're protecting our open spaces, uh, our farmlands, and Travis Air Force Base. All those things we have to do. And I will always have an open door policy so that you always can contact me and talk to me about your concern. I want to encourage you for June 7th, or if you already have your ballot, please vote Wanda Williams for Solano County Supervisor. Visit my website, electwondawilliams.com. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Uh, before I turn the mic over for the one final time, I just wanted to take this time to say thank you, uh, for the invite, and then thank all three of our candidates, Mrs. Barton, Mrs. Williams, and Mr. Joyce. Uh, the one thing I would like to share with everyone is, please, be engaged, be involved. Thank you.
And I'll echo that. I will remind our attendees and anyone watching online from the college, ACLU, from the community, that this is an election that will be held on June 7th. All registered voters have been mailed a ballot. You should have it in the mail. You can check your voter status at the California Secretary of State's website. This Board of Supervisors election is a primary election. If one candidate gets over 50% of the vote, they will be elected into the office. Otherwise, the top two candidates will then go into the general election in November. So as my colleague, Mr. Russell, said, thank you so much to all of our candidates. I want to thank ACLU Chapter, as well as the Student Services I want to thank ACLU chapter as well as the Student Services folks at Solano College for making this happen. Hopefully, this will be the first cycle of many, many cycles of candidate forums here in Solano County. We so appreciate the three of you for being here and everyone for joining us this evening. Take care.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Good night all.
Good night. Let's stop the recording.